All right, I am going to call our meeting to order. And we'd like to start this morning with introductions and announcements. And I'd like to introduce our newest board member. This is Rudy Burgess. And Rudy is with the State Department. He's with the -- and I'm going to let you say what -- where you exactly --
I'm with the State of Virginia, working in the Department of Accounts, on state compliance manager. And I teach part-time at VCU.
And Rudy and his family live here in Hanover County, in King's Charter. And he is now not only a father, but he's now grandfather.
Congratulations.
And so we've got a two-month-old granddaughter this week, and a two-and-a-half-year-old grandson.
Wow, that's wonderful. Do they live here in town?
They're in God's country, in San Antonio.
Oh.
Everything's bigger in Texas.
That's true. That is true. Well, I want to tell you, we are very happy to have you with us.
It's an honor.
And we will. We have lots of jobs for you that we have planned ahead. So, thank you. Okay, and Jamie, I'm going to let you introduce.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Ace Phillips. He is our -- he's in the back there. He's our new business operations manager. He's new to the position, but not new to PRL. He's been with us for quite some time as the manager at the King and Queen Branch, and the manager of the Upper King William Branch. And now we're thrilled to have him in library administration. So, he has certainly hit the ground running in the last couple of weeks that he's been there. We're happy to have him.
Great, thank you. And I have a third person that we want to introduce today. And that is Brett, and it's Sheerdine?
Sheerdine.
Sheerdine. Sheerdine. Brett is our new Jim Taylor. Jim Taylor reports left. And Brett has now joined Hanover County in the Department of Administration, correct, as Assistant Administrator. And we are going to be part of his purview now, which we are very grateful to have you with us. So, and again, as I told Rudy, we'll have all kinds of things for you. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. And Elena is here with us. We're really happy to have you back.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, all right. Before we do anything else, we'll go ahead and do the agenda amendments. Are there any amendments to the agenda this morning? If not, do I have a motion that we will accept the agenda as presented?
I have.
Yes.
I don't know whether or not there needed to be a motion or the library director.
We are going to do that, yes. We have that down under Old Business.
But I must have an old agenda.
You want this packet?
That'd be great.
Okay. We're bringing it. Okay, and we're going to do the introduction and so forth down there, okay? Okay, so Bob has made a motion. And do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. And do we have any other discussion with that? If not, then we'll call for the question. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and I did not state it, but we do have a quorum. So, we are good with that. Next on our agenda is citizens' time. And I have one, Peggy Lavender. Would you like to speak?
It seems very official, because we're such a small group. My name's Peggy Lavender. I live in Mechanicsville. I, for those who don't know, am a longtime volunteer with the Friends of the Library. And I want to say a couple of things. I'm still very concerned about the deputy, I mean, the director position and the morality clause that was in the skills section. And I have been told that council advised not to put that in there. And you guys want to head anyway. I'm looking for a definition for that. I'm looking for an explanation why that would be required in this position posting, and how you assess that for potential directors and applicants. So, my other concern is, as you know, getting new and additional coverage in Hanover County public schools for book banning. I think the math is like 120% more than the nears number of books that counties have banned. That's an embarrassing and sad statistic. To be the best at something that's the worst is really sad. So, the library, the public library, as the book banners love to state, is the place you would go if you wanted to access a book that someone, for whatever reason, decides that you should not be reading, that your family should not be reading. And what my concern is, based on previous proposed collections policy, is that the public library will no longer be a place that people can access books that other people decide they shouldn't read. I would really love for you guys to keep that in mind, that your job and the mission of a public library does not involve moral judgments, bias, your personal beliefs. It involves providing free, fair, shared access at a reasonable, responsible cost to the citizens of this county. So, I'm enjoying my summer reading. I'm enjoying my high prairies. I've volunteered at several events. And I will do, and from the data and my engagement, the library is a wonderful, successful gem in our community. And it's really not necessary to make any drastic changes. And the ones I see coming are really upsetting, and I'm not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, thank you. Board response to the citizens' time. I would bring up the fact that you made the comment that council told us not to put more --
That's what I heard.
That didn't happen.
Oh, really?
No.
Well, someone very high in our county administration told me this.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, it didn't happen with us. So...
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, in that case, we will go ahead and move on. Next is the consideration of the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, we have the draft minutes for June 25 for the Board of Trustees meeting. We have the June 25 Board Financial Report, the June 2025 Warrants, the June 2025 Monthly Deposit Record, and the June 2025 Funding Fund Schedule. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. Okay. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda?
I have, Chair, one quick question. And I actually, before the meeting, kind of asked Ace about it. The truck and thunder, is that customizing van?
That was outfitting the van with the shelving, the new delivery van with the shelves.
Gotcha. Okay. Just wanted to be, make sure I was clear.
Steps for the outside for access to get into the van.
Gotcha. Okay.
That is it.
Great. That was the only question I had. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any questions about the consent agenda items? All right, then I will call for the question. All of those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed. All right, we are ready to move on. And we do not have a legal counsel update. Elena already told me that we don't have one, so we're good on that. Next item on the budget, on the agenda, it's the Director's Report.
I'm Chair of members of the board. Good morning.
Good morning.
To start us off, I would like to start with our library performance and engagement measures. June has been very busy for us. We had over 664 new library card registrations, over 71,000 items circulated in June, and over 40,000 library business for branches. Our summer reading program is thriving. And when I wrote this report, I was going to say that we are about 372 summer reading program participants away from exceeding last year. But when I checked with Kelly yesterday before we came, we have already exceeded those numbers, which is excellent. So, yesterday, we were at 7,364 total registrations. And so, we've exceeded last year with several weeks to go. We're not going to slow down. If you have not signed up for summer reading program, I encourage you to do so. Some service updates that we have rolled out for this year. We have notified our digital customers of some changes to some lending limits that started on July 1st. Hoopla, we are at five items per month per user. That is down from seven items per month per user for this year. As well as Overdrive and WordLibby, we are at 15 items at a time per customer versus 30 items at a time per customer. And I will note about that one, when I say at a time, as soon as you return one of those items, you can immediately check out another item. So, I don't think that these are changes that are impacting many of our customers. We've let them know about this in June, about these changes, as a way to ensure that we are staying within the budget and controlling our costs of our digital materials as more folks in the community are accessing and using them. We have a new three-year renewal cycle. And this is for library card renewals that were happening annually. We had a lot of customer feedback when we implemented our residency requirements for library cards, that customers were looking for a little bit longer period of time between having to come in and renew their cards. So, we listened to that feedback. And starting this year, once a card is renewed, customers will not need to re-verify that integration for another three years unless there's changes to their account. I've been talking about E-rate funding and hotspots the last couple of meetings, as we found out that hotspots were no longer known to be included in the E-rate. And we did finally hear back from one of our vendors. So, we use T-Mobile and Verizon for hotspots. And they provided us with the details of their updated contract. And we are basically rightsizing our hotspot lending program to fit within the budget that we, the board had already approved and allocated for the hotspots. So, that's to say, our customers should not see any disruption to that program, and we're moving forward, unfortunately, without E-rate funding there. Digital resource usage, we, as you all know, in January, implemented the digital access for storytime dispatch. I feel like we have leveled out, but at a nice, comfortable level. We've got about 245 logins per month, which is some steady usage of that digital resource. I picked youth programming for our resource highlight this month, just because we are in the height of summer. We are busy. We're seeing just great numbers for our programs. We've already had several of our system-wide programs, Storyteller, as well as, of course, our annual programs, which are obviously very well-attended. But I also wanted to point out that we have storytimes at all of our branches. And this past year, we hosted 526 storytimes, where there were 13,000 folks in attendance. I wanted to point that out, because it kind of dovetails into a couple of the grants that we are in partnerships that we're working on right now. We've received a grant of $825 from the Rural Technology Fund Grant. And this is going to launch robotics kits for STEM programs at our branches. This is starting at the Montpelier branch. I have to mention and holler our branch manager there for going out and pursuing this grant opportunity. She's going to use the robotics kits for programs, and we're going to start there and there, kind of make her space creative commons at Montpelier, with the hope that we'll take these kits on the road and circulate those kits and do those programs throughout the system. Another exciting partnership is with the Rotary Club of Hanover. They're partnering with PRL and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. They have a grant for early literacy outreach. And so, I've already spoken to the president of the Rotary, and we've talked about some opportunities of connecting the public services coordinators to look at ways that we can potentially have some programs. And one of the ideas I'm very excited about is a celebration. So, when, if you're not familiar with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, would families sign up for that? And it's available program from the Rotary Club of Hanover, to all citizens of Hanover County. Then a child receives a book every month from the age of zero to five. And when they're in term five, they graduate out of that program. And so, we're talking about doing a celebration, so kind of graduation out of that program at our branches, so that we can get those families in, celebrate their achievement, and also give them library cards and continue their early literacy. So, we're looking at ways we can partner with them through that as well. I think I might be wrapping up our King William County withdrawal updates. Right now, we have scheduled weekly pickups at the West Point location through July, so that we can retrieve materials and process them, and start to return materials that now belong to King William County, and then also retrieve the materials that still belong to PRL. I don't know that that is going to continue long-term, but that is what we've set up for this month, to just try to manage the collection that way. One of the last pending MOU items is ensuring that the relabeling of the materials transferred to King William County is done by August 1st. We're going to monitor that and make sure that that is complete. We have obviously been hearing a lot of concern from King William residents at many of our branches about their being ineligible for library cards. And, you know, staff are handling those concerns at the branches, as well as we're answering questions through our Ask and Chat. It is unfortunate, but we are also directing them back to their newly-formed library system for their library service. Some branch highlights. Ashland is being high-traffic. They are, I think that is across the board. Their Friends of the Library had raised over $2,000 from their July 4th book sale. They've got a very successful touring people-away line dancing program. Sounds fun as well. At least already surpassed their 2024 SRP registrations. They're preparing for a veterans luncheon that was well-attended last year. Goochland has seen over 1,000 summer reading program participants. This year, it was interesting, the fireworks in Goochland County, which were slated for July 4th, were actually on July 3rd, which is interesting, because the library was open. So, we ended up supporting the folks that were coming to see the fireworks by offering craft program and restaurant facilities for them while they waited for the show. Hanover Branch has met their fiscal year 25 circulation goals. We are seeing some frustration at that branch over the ramp closure. I'm still waiting on an update on when that will be repaired. The Kingsville is on a weird power grid. When we had storms, half the branch loses power, half of it stays on. They've used it as an opportunity to have some pop-up movie nights for the areas that do have power. Montpelier had over 200 folks attend their kickoff event, which was very exciting, and a lot of the robotics program that they had been awarded. And also, I just am really impressed with how they're working with Parks and Rec to kind of dovetail the programming at that location. So, that's exciting. And at Rockville, Mahjong is continuing to grow there, and they're having some good statistics as well. As I said, with youth and adult programming, we've already seen over 1,000 attendees at our special summer reading programs. We've had some great success with some intergenerational programs for adults in all ages as well. In terms of technology and facilities, of course, we have ongoing H-MAC issues at several branches that are in the process of being prepared. And our IT department is working on deconditioning a lot of equipment, especially from Upper King William and West Point branches, and in the process of trying to get those recycled and our records cleaned up. Personal changes in June, I already spoke about Ace Phillips' promotion to Business Operations Manager. Sadly, it's the largest list of separations I have ever had to report, and that is due to the closure of the West Point and Upper King William branches. We're closing our books financially for the year. We've already received our first quarter state aid dispersment, and I've already requested first quarter payments from Hanover and New Hampshire counties. That's all I have.
I just want to say, Jamie, it's really outstanding the way you have put this report together and keep producing it for each of our meetings. I just want to make that part of the record. It really is so refreshing to be able to have that kind of information available.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I have one, or actually, I have two. I noted that we're still working on the lighting solutions at Mechanicsville. Are you here, where are we?
We are. I will say General Services has just, has a new director for Hanover County. So, they're going through some changes there. We will continue to work with them on that. But I think that that might, there's a lot to get somebody up to speed in that position. So, we will continue to work on that.
But we are working on it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. The other thing I was going to ask about with Rockville, is there a reason why they're struggling with getting people there for the programming?
I think that what the measure was expressing was, we do have sign-ups for a lot of programs. And this is common with a lot of libraries. And I see a lot of how can we solve this, in that people will sign up and they'll highlight us, and they don't show. We've been trying to utilize the features in our software to remind folks, but it's really hard to manage that. So, we're trying to figure out some other solutions, maybe making, you know, getting on the phone, making phone calls, and try to manage it that way better. But, yeah, unfortunately, that is --
It's a tough one. Do they do sign-ups because of materials?
Exactly.
Okay.
Right. So, for a lot of, like, if it's a paint night program or something like that, then we just redo it, just so that we can gauge, yeah, how many supplies to buy for that.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Very thorough. All right, we are ready to move into our standing committee reports. Ask Barbara from the Financial Committee room.
Yes. Let me pull up my, sorry. I just have to pull up my --
Okay.
All right. We met on June 18th. We had a good meeting. We talked about the fact that Ken, Kentron, is still going to be assisting as long as Ace and administration feel they need him for $50 an hour. And I think he's been pretty helpful, very helpful with the audit. Everything is falling into place with our audit. The first audit committee phone call, conference call, will be on Monday, the 28th. And that, I'm not sure how much --
I believe it's moved to the 30th.
The 30th, that's right.
It was moved, yeah.
It was moved to the 30th, yep. So, that will be something that we will likely phase out. I'm guessing, I don't anticipate the audit committee being a standing committee much longer. I suspect that it might become ad hoc. We did decide that the number of days that the hotspots will be held for a patron will be four, as opposed to seven, just to keep them moving, so that their accessibility can increase, because we did not see the value in a hotspot sitting somewhere for seven days, waiting for somebody to pick it up and, you know, turn over, make that a little quicker. And the 2027 budget will be presented to the Finance Committee in September, and the proposed budget, and then will be shared with the full board, hopefully, at the end of September. And our next meeting is Wednesday, September 10th, at, right here. And that's all I've got for Finance.
Okay. Any questions for Finance Committee? All right. Next committee is Personnel Committee.
Well, I'm not the best prepared to speak to where we are with some items in the Personnel Committees, such as our search for a director. I'll leave that to Jody and you. But I can talk about the election of officers. If you want to do it here, do it later.
We, let's hold off and do it in the new business. Yeah.
And that's about the only two things that I need to report on.
Good, okay, great. All right, and audit, you've already talked about. And Barbara's right, we probably do not need to continue that as a standing committee in the future. That is something we will certainly consider. We are ready to move into New Business, and under, or into Old Business, I'm sorry. And the first item in Old Business is new library director search. And I'm going to turn it and talk about it before we do that.
So, we are excited to announce that we are in the process of hiring a new library director. So, we've been recommended to put a motion for the board to, that Zachary Roberts be appointed as a library director, with a start date of August 16th, 2025. His initial annual salary will be $130,000, with the other benefits outlined in his offer letter on July 16th, 2025, and that the board be authorized to execute an individual contract on behalf of the board. That contains the terms and conditions outlined in the offer letter. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Second. All right, and we can all... Okay, and hang on, I'll get that, okay. So, we have the motion before us that, and I'll read it one more time, because it is lengthy, that we will appoint a new library director, and that Zach Roberts will be appointed as library director with a start date of August 16th. It's actually, August 16th is the financial date. That's a Saturday. He will be, his first day in the office is August 18th. That his initial annual salary will be $130,000, with other benefits outlined in the offer letter that is dated on July 16th, 2025, and that the board chair will be authorized to execute an individual contract on behalf of the board that contains the terms and conditions outlined in the offer. conditions outlined in the offered, offer letter. Okay? And that motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments, questions? I think I'll add to this, Zachary will be coming to us from Prince William County Public Library, and he and his family eventually to be down here. So if there are no other comments.
I just want to say that you've, you have done an outstanding job in handling this, and I'm particularly talking about Jody. Jody handled much of the legwork, background work in getting candidates to be interviewed, interviewed, and through this process. And it's been absolutely outstanding to see the process move in that as efficiently as it was.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I agree. I agree with that. Any other comments before we call for the question? In that case, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion has passed. All right. The next item on our Old Business is the Memorandum of Understanding with King William County. And I'm gonna, you've already talked.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't have anything to add.
The only outstanding thing is that they are working on changing the labels, and that is up to King William to do. And the date in the Memorandum of Understanding was, is August 1st. So they have to have that completed by then. All right. Any other questions about the Memorandum of Understanding?
I have a quick question. What, if any, recourse is there if it's not completed by August 1st?
We will look to address that with King William County.
Yeah. It would, yeah. Okay. Now we are ready to move into the New Business. And in the New Business, first thing is the update to the Board of Trustees bylaws. Dennis has worked with us on this. We wanted to get this, the bylaws updated so that, you will notice in the documents that you received, that what has been changed is that it now says the Board of Trustees of the Pamunkey Regional Library serving Hanover and Goochland Counties. It took out the King William and King and Queen Counties, which were both still in there. And it changed the Board of Trustees of Pamunkey Regional Library, so she'll consist of seven members, and five will be from Hanover and two from Goochland. And those will be the changes. If we have any discussion, that's great, we will not vote on this today. The way that this is, our bylaws are handled is they're presented at one meeting and voted on, on the next meeting. So are there any other comments about the changes that have been made? We will move on to the next item then. The next item is the revision to the Library Policy Number Eight, Registration of Library Cards. And Jamie, I'm gonna turn that to you.
Sure. The, the only change, besides I did put the draft into the format that the, that the board had agreed upon moving forward, so it's, it's a formatting change, but the, the change is to eliminate into A, the mention of King William County as being eligible for a library card there.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments about the revisions?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do need to have a motion. Would you?
I make a motion to accept the registration for library cards revisions.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sorry.
All right. And any questions or comments about the revisions?
I do.
Yes, okay.
I don't see any mention of only one area that this should be specifically for Virginia residents. For example, under the purpose, third line down, I feel like it should say, and others who are in Virginia library systems, as opposed to just library systems. And under implementation, under C, seems that it should say other Virginia residents, other Virginia residents may register for a library card. And D, perhaps it's to say parent or guardian's written permission is required for children of Virginia residents under the age of 18. And I say this because I was able to, I just did an experiment, and I was able to use the services of a library in Minneapolis by just getting, you know, the, the proper card info. And I would like to keep this very succinct to Virginia, because we're, we're going to be looking at our reciprocal agreements, but in terms of costs and such, people that can, you know, from far and wide, that can use Hubla, Libby and such, those are expenses that I think should be only reserved for Virginia residents and certainly for Pamunkey
Any other comments? Okay, we need to modify the motion, and we need to add the, a motion to do the revisions. We vote on that first, okay?
We're gonna turn this up so that we can see the revisions.
Yeah, that's a good idea, good idea. I'll wait until you get that looked up.
I will say, you know, in the implementation, A restricts the cards for those people that work, live, or own property in the two counties. B restricts those two Virginians that have a library card from where they reside in, in Virginia. So I think C would be where you would put others, others may register for a library, other Virginians may register for library cards, that word.
Yeah, Virginians or Virginia residents. And under the purpose, I suggested that others who are in Virginia library systems. And then D, something along the lines of parent or guardian is required for children of Virginia residents under the age of 18.
And those changes would be made with the understanding that eventually we are going to take a real good look at our reciprocal agreements. All right. Does everybody understand what the changes would be? All right. I need a, a motion to amend the original motion. Barbara, do you want to?
So moved. I, I move that we amend the registration for library cards as written, as amended in the previous meeting.
And I've got, I've got a note on here. Okay. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. All right. So what we are voting on right now is the amendments, okay? So any other discussion? No other discussion about that? Then I call for the question on the amended amendments to that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amended motion has passed, so now we are ready to vote on the original motion with that amended motion attached to it. We have, I already have the, the motion and the second. Any other discussion before we move on? Okay. I will call for the question then, for the original motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. The motion has passed, okay? All right. The next item on our New Business is the election of officers. And I'm going to turn that to Bob.
All right. The Personnel Committee is charged with developing a slate of officers at the beginning of each fiscal year to be put forth in a motion and voted on by the Board of Trustees for the current fiscal year. And after due consideration, the following is the proposed slate of officers for the Pamunkey Regional Library Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025. Chairman, Kristy Schumacher. Vice Chairman, Barb Sloan. Secretary, Barbara Young. Each of the individuals have agreed to serve in this capacity for the current fiscal year.
And I do have a note from Kristy. I asked her to put it in writing. Kristy's on vacation with family, so she did say that she would be willing to serve. So I wanted to make sure we had that in writing. All right. We have a couple ways we can do this. We can adopt the slate, or we can vote on each individual.
I propose we just adopt the slate.
All right. Do you want to make that, the motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And it's coming from a committee, so it should not need a second.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion to go with that motion? In that case, I call for the question. And the motion is to elect the slate. Kristy Schumacher is the chair, Barbara Sloan is the vice chair, and me as the secretary. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed. And at this point, we're right towards the end of the meeting, but I'm going to turn it over to Barbara Sloan as the vice chair, because the new chair is not here.
She's playing.
And I've been madly trying to take notes at the same time as I'm running a meeting today.
Let it be written in the notes. Just play hooky.
Deep in the woods of Canada somewhere.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other business?
I have one piece of business that I would like to bring up. The new calendar, we adopted last month, and we, I, I thought we had talked about changing the December date to December 10th. And it's, the one that's online still has December 17th. So I just happened to see that, so.
I will make that change and send that out.
Yeah. It's, you know, it was just, we just forgot to do it, that's all. Okay, any other? It's not me anymore, I'm sorry.
Please do. Any other business? Any other business, anybody? Well, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.